In the audience?
Okay, welcome back folks. Today we're in the afternoon session of our January 19th meeting. At this time, we, okay, we have an action item in a public hearing. A continuation of a take break ordinance 21 dash oh three. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to bring back up on the table ordinance 21 oh three.
I'll make a motion. Uh, ordinance 21 oh three.
Second.
In a second, on favor of PCI.
Aye.
Okay. And at this time, I will hear order staff.
The staff report for the amendment to the Valley County Code air compression brakes, also known as Jake brakes. The proposal would amend Valley County Code Title V, Chapter Six, Section One, which provides for the restriction on the use of air compression brakes on vehicles within Valley County. Air compression brakes are commonly called Jake brakes. Currently, air compression brakes are prohibited on State Highway 55 from mile post 95 to mile post 99 in the Smith Ferry area, except under emergency circumstances when necessary to prevent an accident or injury to persons or property. That's ordinance 12 dash two. It was adopted June 1st of 2012. On December 14th, 2020, the Board of County Commissioners held a public hearing on prohibiting air compression brakes between mile post 137 to mile post 139 in the Lake Fork area of State Highway 55 at the request of a citizen. The Commissioners requested that the area be enlarged to include the portion from the southern boundary of McCall to mile post 136.8 at Elk Haven Lane. McCall also has a similar ordinance inside the city limits. Legal notice for the January 2021 public hearing was posted in the Star News on December 31st, 2020. Potentially affected agencies were notified on December 17th. People who previously commented were noticed on December 17th. The notice sheet was posted on bulletin boards at post offices and libraries in Cascade, Donley, McCall, and Yellow Pine, and at the board county commissioner meeting room door. The fact sheet and draft ordinance were posted on the Valley County website under public hearing information on December 17th, and public hearing notice signs were placed at the southern edge of the city of McCall and near Elk Haven Lane on December 29th. Responses received. Michelle Groenfeld, City of McCall, provided the relevant City of McCall codes for air compression brakes. They are prohibited within the city limits, except under emergency circumstances. Jack Gans requested the boundary be extended northward to Heinrich Lane, Rogers Lane to the north in order to include the entire Lake Fork area, and that was dated October 9th. Jim Jones, 13802 Highway 55 approves the proposed ordinance. As a log truck driver from Icola Logging with 35-plus years of experience with heavy trucks, he believes the Jake brakes are not needed along this stretch of the highway 95% of the time, only during the occasional emergency. He suggests that Jake brakes be prohibited between mile post 137 and mile post 142, so as to join the city of McCall. No Jake brake ordinance. Janet Meckel, Meckel Excavating is opposed. This section of the highway is busy and accident prone. A Jake brake minimizes the speed differential between cars and trucks, thus becoming an invaluable and essential tool for a truck driver. They're very effective at reducing the speed of heavy trucks. They provide faster, steadier, and more efficient braking, reduced wear on engines, tires, and service brakes, lower vehicle maintenance costs, less vehicle downtime, and provide enhanced driver confidence. The trucks with poorly muffled exhaust systems should be individually targeted to reduce noise. Until this area is upgraded with turnout lanes and better ingress and egress improvements, truck drivers need to have all safety tools available to keep them in the public safe. Jerry and Christie Groves live in Lake Fork on the highway and hear compression braking all day and regularly each night. It is very noisy and disruptive, especially at night. And since the staff report was completed and sent to you last week, we received four additional pieces of correspondence, and I sent that to you earlier today in an email to give you a chance to read it. One is dated January 17th from Danielle and Mike Drake. They live in Smith Ferry, and they can sympathize with those loud types of brakes banned along Highway 55. However, banning them will not help. It's been their experience that there are truck drivers who ignore those bans. The issue isn't banning the Jake brakes along Highway 55, it's enforcing the ban. I hope the County Commissioners will consider encouraging requesting the Valley County Sheriff to enforce the Jake brake bans that are already in place before you add more. And then exhibit number two is a letter from Alex Ray, 410 Knights Road. He supports the Jake brake ban. He would like to request that the Jake brake ban be considered along the entire route Midas had proposed to use to access the Stibnott mine site. Numerous recreational resources along this route would be ruined by an excessive noise of Jake brakes, including Trail Creek hot springs. Exhibit number three from Sally Nut says she lives on Rogers Lane off Highway 55. She supports the ban on compression brakes from McCall to Lake Fork. However, she thinks it should continue on through Donley. Highway noise roars through this valley, and the ban of the compression brakes would help considerably. And then exhibit number four. He left a phone message, and he supports the ban on Jake brakes, and that is Glenn Jacobson with McCall. You know, this was previously heard and then tabled to the day because he thought it should be expanded from the Elk Haven Lane all the way to the southern boundary of McCall. And that's what we did, then we re-noticed everything.
Elk Haven, remind me, is right across from Franklin?
No, Elk Haven is south of Traybert, which is south of Lake Fork. Is north of Fairbrothers.
Oh, okay.
On the east side of the road.
So any questions for staff?
So we've received feedback, uh, two, two different types of conversations. One was the lack of enforcement. So I asked if the sheriff's department could be here. There was somebody that reached out on Vine Hard. There's, there is Jake brakes ordinance in McCall, and yet it's not being enforced. And the police chief there basically wrote a letter to people saying, sorry, we don't have the bodies to enforce it. So that's my question is how are we going to enforce this? And secondly, if we set parameters like Elk Haven Lane, isn't that more confusing to the police department unless we just say, ban on Highway 55 in Valley County?
I don't think you want to do that because you have two hills, Little Donner, the Scarner Hill. Those guys need those brakes. When I can see, you know, the rest that may be good. They gotta have them for Little Donner especially.
You're going down the canyon by Round Valley, I mean, that's a tight, gnarly little section of road. So I think those are appropriate spots.
However, I can hear them from my house when they come down Berry Hill towards the north. I can hear them all the time. And I think the other issue is a lot of these guys are running straight pipe now. They don't even have a muffler on their truck. But that's a homeowner issue.
So I guess I, my basic question is, are we making that more difficult for enforcement? Just because this section doesn't have it, this section does, this section doesn't? You know, I mean, then the police officers are going, I don't know, I'm supposed to ticket here or not? And what is our enforcement mechanism? If they get caught using their Jake brakes, is there a fine, is there?
I think it's a $500 fine, isn't it?
Well, it's an infraction.
The thing is, there's just no way for, I mean, there's really no way for law enforcement to be able to enforce that unless they just set up, you know, random check stations, you know, on the highway. You guys just have to be in the right place at the right time.
Well, maybe where we know that they're being used and, you know, I mean, you check speeding, you check for DUI once in a while, that would have to be an enforcement mechanism. It would only take a couple of tickets, I would bet, and we're about to enforce it.
Is that jurisdictionally, isn't that, isn't that all under state control though? I mean, we're talking about highway going through Valley County.
It's, it's the highway, but you're setting an ordinance on the highway. Because that's where the complaints are coming from.
Yeah, Cascade, Donley, and McCall each have one, and then we had one down in Smith Ferry area. What we're doing is just expanding this south from McCall. I know that you understand that.
Absolutely understand that, yeah.
It's like any ordinance, some people will comply and some won't.
Senator, we also, the other attorney we have, we have County Shop there on Lake Fork. Those guys, do they understand this too, that they're coming into Lake Fork in the county bound truck? Do they want to be able to?
We sent notice. I didn't ask Jeff specifically, but I was talking to somebody who said their concern was if we just banned it on 55 was Little Donner.
I mean, you could say on 55 with the exception of, and just have one area that you know is exempted from that ordinance. I just, I don't believe in passing a law or passing an ordinance, just pass it. We know that we're not going to enforce it. That doesn't make sense to me. So, you know, how are we going to enforce it? Would we have the support of enforcement? And I think it's a greater conversation, I just wrote it down, this conversation for next week with ITD. We have no turning lanes. We have no, you know, right turn, left turn lanes, and so we're creating a situation where the guys may have to use their Jake brakes more. And that's on ITD. They have got to give us some turning lanes and these, and turning onto these major intersections.
And a lot of that, I think, has based on accident records of each of those intersections. Sheriff, or I'm sure you've had one, Tom Dean, you're welcome.
Yes, it is a state highway. I understand within the city limits. And I live along Highway 55 South. I mean, I hear the traffic. As far, I mean, it's an infraction. And, yeah, how do you know? Unless you happen to just catch them on that situation. A lot of times they say it happened at night, although I have heard from the north end of 55, people coming into the city and during the day, and they were having some issues with that. You know, you have a lot of the, now the logs, so you have a lot more traffic.
So my concern is if we pass something like this, we have an ordinance in place, now we're going to get people going, why do you never enforce your ordinance? You know, why you put stuff out there you're not going to enforce? So now we've got that many more complaints against us that we're, we have something we're not regulating.
And we can't just go and serve somebody based on someone else's say-so unless they want, you know, to sign a citation. It's, it's an infraction. No misdemeanor.
It's like a speed limit. This isn't a land use ordinance, just because I'm sitting here. This is like, right now.
I think, Sherry, the majority of the people, certainly will follow the new ordinance, but there's always going to be people that speed or stop at stop signs and, you know, the goal is to get a higher percentage of guys that will do it. I know this last winter, last fall, they were holding all the dirt up from the construction at Smith Ferry, turning off an OHS. And I could hear those trucks all night long coming down Berry Hill. There was, I don't know how many trucks a day bringing that material up down the canyon. It's like, that's really pretty unnatural. And some of the trucks you can't hear, and other trucks are sitting in straight pipe. Very loud.
So, I mean, we can do what, what we can do and then.
So if we put this ordinance in place, what is the fine and factor of benefit there besides?
Doesn't have a fine set. It says, it's a misdemeanor, or it's an infraction, isn't it? Did you have other in there?
No, just the infraction.
Infraction, so it has to be.
Well, City of McCall sent us there, code, and it said.
$300.
Not to exceed $300.
Not to exceed, yeah.
Well, this is in compliance with Section 31 dash 715 eight, 715A of Idaho Code.
Okay. Have to look that up.
Does that mean?
It's, it's a police ordinance, I don't know.
Like a post.
Okay, any more questions for staff? Well, I'm going to move on. Some, uh, donations, some that are for, some are against. Am I not open up, is there anyone on the phone? Or not dialing, are we done?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I did not receive the request to participate via teleconference from opposition. The ordinance were undecided. All comments that I have received were via email, and I sent four of those on to my name is only administrator, so the hurricane, she read all of those in the record.
So at this time, I'll take testimony of anybody who's a proponent. Let the record show there was none. Take testimony when committed. This is a rule, let the record show there was none. And testimony of opponents. Same thing over and over. Any more comments or conversation on this? And I'm going to close the public hearing at 118 and bring it back for deliberations.
We're going to do it, we should either do it all the way through Valley County, the exception of, you know, that one hill you've been talking about, the two hills you're talking about.
Well, you've also got coming in, I'm going to take it, go to the top of the Stephen, what's that one? The one in McCall? Yeah. So when they're coming up Little Ski Hill down into McCall, I think that's already covered. That's the one another hill that I can think of.
That one is excluded so that they can use their Jake brakes, correct? You know?
No, it's not. That was a big issue. For a time, that's why they came way back when, because they were coming into town roaring. Yeah, yeah.
But I don't think the county adopted anything.
No, it's the city did.
I know that, does the city limit go right up to the county line?
Yeah, it's pretty close, right there, yeah. I can't really name the road, it's right before that.
Key Hill.
Yeah. So it's really close to the hill.
The city limit does.
After looking at this 31 dash 715A, I think we should probably be more specific if you're inclined. That's just the code that. It says. That's just about publication.
It's just, it's such a hard ordinance to enforce. I think we need to probably pass that because we do need some kind of a way to some roads, but.
And then we use this in support of ITD, you know, starting to build us some turn lanes and some improving the roads so that they don't have to use their Jake brakes every, all the time. But I also think we need to send out a letter to the logging firms and the guys that are using these big trucks so that they understand that it's in place.
That's a hard one to do because you know, you're going to contact your information.
We post signs. We'll have the signs posted like.
12 dash two, when it rolls down to Smith Ferry, we just put signs up on the, you know. Smith Ferry is a really narrow canyon, so all the noise stays in there. That's what that was.
Just for clarification, so any person who violates any provision of this section shall be deemed guilty of an infraction and punished as provided in Section 1 dash 4 dash 1 of this code. For your, um, to satisfy judgment as ordered by the court pursuant to this section, shall be deemed contempt of court punishable as a misdemeanor pursuant to Idaho Code Section 18 dash 18 oh one. So it's just a typical infraction that progresses.
So with an infraction, there is no fine?
There is a fine.
See, on the court cost, I don't know if that adds up to.
It's like a speeding ticket.
Yeah. I thought I read somewhere it was $500, so $2, $500.
The city was up to $300.
And I think where we're doing it through the Lake Fork area, it's pretty flat. I don't think we're going to have that much of an issue. But I, I would have a real problem if we're trying to do this on Little Donner, Berry Hill. I don't think that's fair at all.
Dangerous.
So what's your pleasure?
So is the fact that where we're starting it, out there on Elk Haven Lane in the middle of nowhere, is that an issue for the police officers?
Why are we starting it that far south? I mean, I'm trying to think of who would be out there that.
There's just trying to keep it out of your shot of Don, uh, excuse me, Lake Fork.
Okay.
There's a bunch of houses along there.
That's kind of where just it's starting to get a little bit more congested.
Well, I just honestly, I kind of wonder like, if we do that, then do we, like you mentioned, have a blanket ordinance in the listing sections? I hate to pass this and then say, oh, well, we've covered Donley, so we need to do it south.
Donley has a run.
The area's around though.
But that's confusing because now you've got Donley, you've got Elk Haven without it.
But that's all flat ground. It's all flat ground from Donley south, everybody there. You're not going to hear it that much. My, my concern, yes, is that, thinking about this now, and we don't have to do anything today, but if we have minus score in the background, we may be looking at this one lake highway as well.
I would think so, yeah.
Especially around the Warren Lake area. I don't know.
So just, you know, it just feels like we're making little timing, you know, just putting pins on a map when if it's, if it truly is something we don't want in Valley County, then we can work to try and mitigate this going forward. To me, it should be something in Valley County that is an ordinance that is countywide, and you make exceptions for emergency situations like that, that is.
That puts us, sorry. So that puts us a little bit of a bind that if we do get somebody using their Jake, and they said, hey, it was an emergency, who are we to say, his brakes, his air wasn't low, his brakes weren't hot? I think we're taking a valuable safety tool away from them, not letting them use their Jake. And, you know, I understand the Smith Ferry thing, but is it better than, kind of like what we're talking about, the few seconds that Jake's used, or is it better to have a six-hour stoppage when an ice truck goes into into the river and the whole road shut down because they weren't able to brake? And that might solve itself when they straighten it out with the construction going on down there, but I think it's a safety thing that we got to really kind of, I hate to just say you can't use it at all and then.
Well, I'll tell you what, if you've ever ridden in a loaded cattle truck, you're glad you have it because it's a different brake than if you're using your foot pedal. Immediately, when you hit that foot pedal, all those cows slam right into front of that truck. Where Jake brake is like a real ease.
It sucks, yeah.
It's not slam when you're braking on the hill. And it's a kill cattle, where she, horses do it.
Yeah, the one in Smith Ferry is from like, the, um, rural smallest tunnel. South.
South, right. So that.
Around those residents. It's, it's all for the protection of the residences.
Yeah. One of the deputies said they were down there one day and heard, heard one being used. They were in the pullout by Cougar Mountain there. But then here comes two, three trucks off the mountain. He's like, which one was the one? I can't tell you which one was the one up there in the canyon using his brake. So it's hard for them to, you know, like you said, it's tough to, unless you're buying them or something that enforce that, unless he's the only one coming out of the canyon that way.
Or it could have been somebody coming off High Valley with the loading logs.
There's the other, they had a complaint about them coming off a tripod. It's like, well, they're, you live in timber country, they're on Forest Service road. They got to stop that truck somehow. So they were complaining about the trucks off a tripod this year. Yeah.
Okay, so this is our, we'll go ahead and make the motion we approve. Orness 21 dash zero two, is that what it was? Three.
Great.
21 dash oh three.
One second.
Any more discussions? I think as we come more. Got to think about the tolling the streets of. Oh.
That's what I'm worrying about. Yeah, I think this is a stopgap measure to a larger conversation because, you know, I think we need to work with the firms and say, hey, this is going to have more stringent if you don't make sure that you're following, you know, you don't make sure that you've got the proper equipment on your trucks, you know, you're training your drivers correctly. Because I don't think this does a lot to take your, uh, problem.
Okay, so one second. If there's no more discussion on Fisher PCI? Who's the carries?
And I'll ask ITD if they want to put the signs up.
We're having that conversation whether next Monday. I'm getting a whole list going, you're just giving lists.
So I guess you can ask them next Monday if they're going to put the sign up. They change so many people, I mean, you're not going to be able anymore.
I'll re, I'll push it out to the deputies again, maybe just to re-reinforce. Maybe we'll get something. Like I said, maybe it is just one or two, and then it gets out and it stops.
I need you out to those companies that are, isn't, yeah.
I can take two or three right now in Lake Fork that are there, but there's quite a few truck companies in Lake Fork.
Yeah, I think some of them would definitely have two.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, and I think it's also with all of our delivery trucks. It's a lot of the people coming in from outside the area. And I just feel like it's going to be a little confusing to be in the middle of a flat ground and see a sign. They're going 65 miles an hour, they're not going to be stopping to read a sign right today.
Well, I think you've got a few of them at Smith Ferry, not all of them, but a few. Okay, we got about, uh, three minutes for our next one.
I would, I would like some workers comp. I've soaked myself with something sharp in one of my files.
It sounds like a personal responsibility.
I was starting to sharp things in your files, I mean. Those on the knives.
I think it was one of these clip things here. I was just like. Yes, it's all the dice, I take off people at my P and Z meetings.
Knives in the chains.
I just was talking to a guy working tackle jobs, and he said that, uh, he walked over here the other day, and he had on his gun, he had on his knife, and the deputy at the front said, come on in, and he goes, nope, you come out here because I can't come into the building right now.
Well, there's a controversy because there's a congressman newly elected back who's they're trying to get into the Capitol with the pistols anymore, whatever. And she's following all these second amendment violations, and actually thinking, oh my God, just take the gun off, wouldn't it be easier? Leave it in your car. So, is somebody calling in on this one, Doug, I think?
Mr. Chairman, um, yes, but I was, I apologize, I was confused that we had received a withdrawal of the application. I thought it was a withdrawal from the reconsideration, but it's actually a withdrawal of the actual CUP. So I did not know if the Commissioners were in fact going to take testimony, but Mr. David Carrick indicated that he wanted to present to the Commissioners regarding the matter. And I did in fact provide him with the call in number, and told him that the Commissioners would be making the determination if they in fact will be hearing public testimony or not.
Are we on the record then?
We've been on the record the entire time. I don't think Chairman has because in fact opened the public hearing.
We have 35 more, so.
Okay.
And this, do I go, is this a table? We're bringing it back up? I'm not sure how to handle this one.
Just announce it, and I will comment to the, the matter.
Because I don't think we need to take public hearing, do we?
That will be your decision. I anticipate not.
They pulled the CUP, it's off the table.
And, but we'll talk about that when.
So there's no, you don't have a hearing out.
Right.
Because of the, it's going to.
Right, but.
Okay, we got it. So, the next one on our chain is also an action item. This is a public hearing for reconsideration of conditions from 20 dash 18 Burn's RV. Apparently, the applicant has withdrawn for CUP.
Yes, um, on January 11th, 2021, I received a withdrawal of the original application from Dino Byrne for CUP 2018 Burn's RV. And I forwarded that information on to Mr. Carrick's counsel, Steve Milliman, made everybody aware of that. At this time, I would recommend that I had sent you a motion that accepts the withdrawal of the Burn's RV and then rescinds your facts and conclusions of the previous approval, because previously you approved the CUP, but if you're going to accept the withdrawal, rescind those facts and conclusions so that it's a dead matter and there is no approval hanging out there. And then if this landowner ever wants to apply for another CUP, they can do so.
But they'd start over?
They would start over. But, yeah, so accept the withdrawal, rescind the facts and conclusions, unless you want to have a public hearing on the reconsideration.
There's nothing really, I don't think, to have a public hearing on because the premise is wrong.
Right.
We just have to accept that fact.
So then it goes back. So, then it goes back to the ordinance in place then, which governs that, is three RVs on site?
If, well, they have to apply. That'd be an administrative permit. This was for a conditional use permit.
But if they want to be more, three would be conditional.
Yes.
But they do have to go ahead and apply, so the ordinance will be enforced to whatever the current standard is through that permit.
Yes.
I'm just wondering if we're addressing any of this gentleman's concerns through your administrative permit? Are any of those...
That...
Mr. Fleming had brought up.
Mr. Fleming.
But that would be a different application. You probably shouldn't talk about a different application under the existing application. I mean, if they're going to apply for an RVC permit, that's a different application, which is subject to the appeal path to you. You don't want to pre-decide that application in this hearing.
I just didn't think we would ever see it because an administrative permit just goes to you.
Well, administrative permit, anything I decide can be appealed to the P&amp;Z Commission. Anything the P&amp;Z Commission decides can be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners and then District Court. I don't know.
Okay, so this time, I'm going to make the motion to do accept the withdrawal of CUP 20-18 known as the Burns RV by the applicant received on January 11th, 2021, and rescind the facts and conclusions that were previously approved by this board on December 14, 2020.
I'll say.
Okay, been moved to second and thirded. Any more discussion? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, I will close the public hearing at 134. Thank you, Sunda, for your good hard work.
That saved me a lot of work. There's probably Mr. Carrick.
We still need this last action item, Doug. Mr. Chairman, I believe that's... I believe so. I believe this is going to be scheduled for two weeks, two weeks. I will adjourn this meeting at 1:35. Everybody stay safe.
So, wasn't this just handy today? I'm just so happy with this.